If you have a cellphone, please turn it off or silence it. Please, we'll observe a moment of silence. Please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. If you have cellphone, please silence it, turn it off. Okay? And if you would just follow the rules.
Councilmember Clark?
Here.
Reed?
Here.
Brown?
Here.
Lawler?
Spicer?
Here.
Williamson? And Mayor Atchison?
Here.
All right. Items for individual discussion, first, what we're gonna talk about is the goals that were set, how we're gonna define what the, how we're gonna determine that we're successful in meeting that. Some that's gonna be pretty obvious. Things that we can, we can do as far as policy initiatives or incentives and actions that city council can take to help facilitate reaching these goals. If we are able to break down in specific sub steps, enabling objectives, things that we can identify that have to be taken in order to achieve the goal. We'll brainstorm, identify obstacles to it and to reaching the goal and what might be solutions to those or workarounds. But I think it's important that we have a clear understanding of what we're trying to accomplish and a good frank discussion on what are the obstacles, what are the things that city council can do. These are the goals that we set and we need to figure out what the city, action city council can take to try to make them possible, achieve them. What resources are gonna be necessary, possible sources of funding? And then we'll see who amongst the council would like to kind of be the lead on it. We've got plenty of goals to go around and so that's what I would like to do. So the first item is discussing a second grocery store. So if council member wants to put that forward as a goal, would like to explain what the, other than fact that it would be nice to have another grocery store, what are the driving things behind it that the, that the residents are looking for, that they don't have now, so we can keep that in mind, there may be creative solutions.
One of the things is the prices at Family Fair are very high. And most of the people in this town get food stamps and things like that. And I myself don't shop here in Elbe. I shop, I live out of town, I shop out of town. I mean, I work out of town, so I shop out of town. And, and then there's other things that that grocery store just doesn't even carry that people, like example Hispanic food, there's not a large variety of Hispanic food. I know that, what is that, one in Marshall?
Save-A-Lot?
Save-A-Lot, the Save-A-Lot in Jackson has a huge variety of Hispanic food in their grocery store. And even vegetation is limited. So it would be behoove us to get another one in that would be able to meet some of those needs.
Councilmember Brown?
Thank you, I just wanted to add to councilmember Clark's list of concerns for residents. I know this area specifically has been identified as a food desert. And the community gardens have attempted to alleviate some of that burden. But however, people really want and need affordable grocery options here in town. I also don't grocery shop here unless it's something I need.
Right now.
Right now. And I can't wait to go out of town. So I just wanted to add to what she had.
Other comments? Councilmember Spicer?
Thank you. I just wanna add, let's piggyback on councilman Clark's and Brown's comment that I think that if we can offer an option for people, then in terms of a second grocery store, then we could possibly keep our money in, in our community. Because I think that's important to grow a community is if you keep our monies here. We just heard two of our councilpersons and I partially shop out of town because I work out of town, so I shop out of town a bit too. So, but if we could have something affordable here, I would probably decide to keep my money in town if I knew I could get a better option. So I think having that option is, should be available to residents. And I think it would certainly help our community.
Councilmember Reed, did you wanna add any comments?
I can't say anything but the same thing everybody else has said.
Okay, so I'm gonna-
The price is, I take a lot of senior, I take, well not a lot, but there are senior citizens that I take shopping and they talk about how their money does not go very far here. So usually I take them out of town to shop. And I would like to keep our money in Elbe. So if we had an affordable store here, it would be a lot plausible.
Okay.
For me and, and it would help the city.
So the three things I gathered from that was lower prices, bigger selection, more variety, and specifically produce and vegetables. Okay. So I did ask, invited Ms. Amy DePries from Economic Development Corporation here tonight to talk with us and Ms. Spicer, the chair of the EDC board. I know you've made some efforts in some past on trying to bring another grocery store in here, so council has requested if you could give us an update on that and just, and just be blunt at what the challenges are that you've seen and any ideas that you, suggestions for the council to consider to try to achieve that. I'd appreciate that. Yes, ma'am.
All right, so in preparation for tonight, I kinda organized my thoughts, so I'm gonna read a lot of this, so I don't miss things. But for the grocery store, if you remember, we just approved the Economic Development Strategic Plan. So if you look within that plan, it's included in, in Goals 1, 4, and 7. And it might not say grocery store, but it's, it talks about the things that we need to get the grocery store. So the first thing that our office has done is tried to understand the trends that are going on with grocery right now. You've seen a shrinking middle class, a larger divide between the socio-economic classes. You've seen Amazon and Walmart become these super centers that are really specializing in delivery. I think at Walmart, you can get it delivered to your cart. Amazon is delivering it to your home. There's so many options now. And you've also seen this movement away from the typical store. So you're seeing more of the warehouse or what they call the dark stores where you do your order and then you go up and pick it up at the, at the dark store. It's more of a computer-run warehouse with a few people in the front that are filling your order. Destination shopping, so I would say that's similar to what Horrocks would be or Bushes down in southeast Michigan. It's, it offers more than just the shopping experience. It offers that wine and beer while you shop or culinary classes. It turns it into more of an experience. And then there's also a shift towards urban development. And you're seeing this just recently in Lansing, they approved a Target superstore, miniature superstore for downtown. And it's gonna be part of a high-rise residential development with Target on the, on the main floor. You haven't seen a grocery store in downtown Lansing in a long, long time. Is it East Lansing?
In the Olive Gardens in Milco, I believe.
Okay. I was thinking it was sort of the city market. It doesn't matter. But you haven't seen it in those areas in quite some time. You see them, you know, out farther. The other thing that we have to look at in this community, and if you happened to catch, we shared a TED Talk or a, I'm sorry, a podcast the other day on Facebook on the, the combat between dollar stores versus the grocery store. And your, your, dollar stores are filling the gap for a lot of smaller communities. They can't get the fresh produce, but they can get a lot of the other stuff. And it's driving the cost at the grocery stores up because they're not getting as much demand then. So when we look at all of these different things, we also looked into what decision factors do grocery stores look at. Aldi and Whole Foods absolutely are population density. How much, how many people are gonna be shopping here? Where's the competition? What's the traffic patterns? And, you know, it goes back to those, those key things. Albion does not have that. So what do we do if Albion doesn't have the, the population that they require? Kroger has taken a different direction. Kroger is moving away from the bricks and mortar and doing more of an experience for them. And they're trying to deliver the groceries where the customer already is. So they're doing things like ClickList and Instacart where you can pick up your groceries. They're testing Walgreens satellite offices where you go to pick up your scripts and you pick up your, your ordered groceries at the same time. So they're moving away from bricks and mortar and more to customer engagement and engaging where the customer wants it. So we've, through all of this, we've kind of keyed out a couple prospects that we think we have a good chance at, at securing. Those would be Horrocks, Market House, that's also available in Hillsdale, and Bushes. That doesn't mean that there aren't other ones. These are ones that we've seen develop in areas that I think we could create the environment or create the business case for them to be successful here. It's also important to understand-
I'm sorry to interrupt you, but one is Bushes?
Bushes is similar, you know what Horrocks is? It's similar to that. It's, it's a little bit more high-end. It's, it's down in southeast Michigan. So if you ever get over by Livonia area, there's one there and it's, it's a wonderful store. But again, it's more of that, it's, you probably wouldn't get all your canned goods there, your meat, you might get your meat because they got a good butcher market, but you might get all your produce there. So more of that Horrocks flavor and less of going to a Kroger and getting everything. So there're, there're options. We also wanted to understand what the incentives would be available at the state and federal level, which there isn't any at the federal level. The state, there's obviously the, the normal community development incentives that you've seen on other projects. So the community development block grant funds could be used in a, in a mixed-use development that included grocery. CRP, which is Community Revitalization Program, could also be used, tax increment financing. But the one that's kind of interesting is the CRP program actually has identified urban food initiative as a targeted market. And they have put 5% earmarked on grocery development. So 5% of the funds that go for CRP have to be set aside for this food initiative. Now, you heard me say urban, so it is more of an urban setting. Doesn't mean that we couldn't find something to work that makes sense in, in Albion. That would probably be more downtown because it's that, that funding pot focuses on walkable communities. We're also lucky to have ARC. ARC can offer a subsidized redevelopment space to incent them to grow here. Obviously, we don't have the space ready, but that's something that could be offered in the future. And then we can work with our developers, our strip mall developers. And John Tracy and myself have had conversations with both of them. And both of them have been interested in, in incenting somebody to come. And basically what their view is, if, if we can get them to come, we'll give them virtually free, the community will fill the gap. Now, that's a hard, that's a hard sell to them. They're gonna have to see free to get them here and then the community's gonna have to, to show them that they can be successful. But they feel confident that they would be successful. So they're willing to do that, but we haven't gotten anybody interested. So that comes to where the city could be, you know, part of your initiatives. What is the city, what could the city do to sweeten the pot? If we don't have the demographics, if we don't have the traffic counts that are required to bring another second grocery store here, what can we do to create the environment that will attract them? So that's something that the city can look at. So I've already mentioned Cernow and Galdow, the, the two strip owners, we've had conversations with them. They were supposed to make a call on Horrocks. I don't know if that's happened or is yet to happen. And then there's also been a client that ARC has been working with that has recently fallen through that had agreed to do a downtown market, more fresh vegetables and produce and stuff like that. That one has fallen through, however, we're still working to find somebody else. Part of that development in the downtown, I think it's important to have something that they can walk to and get the things that they need. And maybe that's in combination with the Albion Food Hub. You know, there, it's not within their purview, but doesn't mean that it couldn't be. So let's talk about some of the obstacles. Demographics, obviously, I've mentioned the, you know, you have to be able to demonstrate the demand for the product. We don't have the population count, we don't have the traffic count. So what do we do beyond that to make the business case for them to be here? We don't have a very high expendable income in our community. That's another thing that will be an obstacle or a challenge for us to overcome. We've got three dollar stores in a, in a market that's crowding the space. How many more will come? We don't know. You know, that, that comes into the planning and to the council's policy. There's been this movement away or the shift away that the trends that I've already mentioned with the shrinking middle class and less and less rural grocery stores and more urban settings. And then time. It takes a lot of time to create the environment that will attract that next second grocery store. If we don't have time, then we have to find, we have to create the environment for them. So if we can't create the, the number of demographics that they need, the number of traffic, the number of population, then what else could we do to, to offset that? So I just kind of took some time to outline some initiatives that I thought were good, easy targets that we could do in the near term. Family Fair is our current provider. There should be discussions with them on what's not acceptable in this community. Doesn't mean that they're gonna change, but can't hurt to ask and start that. You know, if price and, and variety is the problems, if they, if we can show what kind of leakage is happening from this community in, in groceries, which right here I heard several, and that's, that should be fairly easy to, to ascertain, then we can show them that they could, they could capture that market if they gave what the community needed. So having some discussions with them. Defining what the true need is. Is it a total second grocery store or is it a butcher's market and a farmer's market, a fresh fruits and vegetables, you know, full-time? Like a Horrocks or something like that. So what is the true need? Or is it everything? Is it, is it, you know, flour and your canned goods and everything? And then one of the other things that's been very successful, especially with restaurants in other areas, and they, I think I've talked to you about it before, they do it in Mason called the Mason 100. And when they, when they're looking to fill a restaurant, they'll get 100 signatures and these 100 people say, if you come, I will go to your, your restaurant and I will eat there, you know, once a week, once a month, whatever it is. And I'm signing that I'll support that. So it's kind of a ready-made market. Now, 100 people shopping at a grocery store is not very many. You know, so we have to up that ante. But we could put together and they'll be in 500 or whatever we could get to demonstrate that there is a demand here. And I don't know that it would work as well for a full-fledged grocery store, it might work for more of that destination or a butcher or something like that. Something that, that's truly missing and is not defined or not filled right now. And then I talked about the Albion Food Hub. You know, there's, there's case studies out there about doing co-ops, especially when it's fresh vegetables and fruits and produce. And doing that with, in cooperation with the food hub and making that more of a hub on, on many levels. So those were just some of the things that we've done and some of the initiatives that I think, based on the comprehensive plan that you've already approved for the city and the strategic plan and where they can kind of fit in.
So you said demographics, population, so do you have typical values that, that then entice grocery stores? I mean, we can't produce more population in six months, but-
No. And you can't really find rural demographics that are driving it right now because they're not really developing rural stores. So everything I can find is based on an urban setting.
Okay.
So that's why I say there's, there's, there's probably more hope in getting a more specified or destination-type shop than it is another Kroger.
Councilmember Clark?
So do we consider all the, the outer, the smaller cities on the outside of Albion that go to either Marshall, Battle Creek, or Jackson to shop because they don't have grocery stores either?
Yeah.
Consider that because we are closer than all of those other locations?
Yeah, so what you do is, and it's depend, it depends on which store you're working with. Myers, I think, has like a 10-mile radius. Now, again, that's more urban because 10 miles out here, you're going more than that to get to a Meyer store. But they, they, they have to have that population density within that radius. And it's dependent on who you're talking to. So again, trying to find somebody that's considering a rural area and finding out what their specific population is. We've done a lot of, about a 30-minute commute for workforce. We've had to take each community that you could drive to in 30 minutes. And it's doable, you can find the population. It's not, it's not the best information because it's about 10 years old. We need to have the next census to really update it. But it gets, it gets a little bit diluted the more you have to pick and choose and you can't use a whole county or you can't use a whole MSA. And it's doable.
MSA being what?
What is it?
Said you can't use a whole MSA, I didn't-
Battle Creek MSA, it's a metropolitan statistical area.
Oh, okay.
Is that right?
One more question. I heard you say that Krogers is looking at the delivery or the pilot of delivering to people and having like sites to do. Because we used to have a Krogers here, right out there by where Family Dollar is and there still is space there. Maybe that's something that we could look at or talk to them about and maybe they might be even willing to do that because if she's traveling, taking people out of town, I'm sure there's other people traveling, taking people out of town. And, you know, we might, we might have to be, you know, think out of the box and think of other ways, you know, to help the seniors to be able to go online, you know, and put their orders in and things like that to have them available, but I'm sure we could.
Well, I don't know, is shipped available in Albion? Does anybody use that yet? I, I think that's Meyer, I'm not sure. But for a fee, they'll deliver it to your house.
Okay.
I still like to go and pick my own stuff out, so I, I haven't tried that. But there are options, whether they get to this, this area or not is another discussion. But if we wanna create creative options for them, we have to give them something. We have to show them that there's gonna be sales here and you're, you're committing to it, that there's some incentive for them to, to try the market because there's risk. You know, the same thing, we talk about the downtown development. Those that come first are absorbing the most risk. With each development that comes after that, it makes it easier to know that you're gonna be a successful development. Because it's tried and true, there's, you know, you're, you see that the Peabody has rented four apartments and you're not fearful. It's the same thing when we're looking at trying to get a housing developer or we're trying to get a grocery store or, you know, a medical clinic. All of those things kind of, they go by the same thought process.
Councilmember Spicer?
Thank you. Amy, am I getting my head ahead of myself when I say, have you looked at, do you have information available regarding, you know, outline certain Albion's population, but disposable income, age, structure, that might be using such a thing or, or even create a committee? Or am I getting ahead or?
No, there's, there's, we've got that information, just the same what I just said, we need the new, new census to have really accurate information. We're getting to the new, I mean, it's, it's available, but it's 10 years old. So it's, it's, it's out there. I hope with the new census, it tells a better story. You know, so that's one thing I will say to, to you, the more you can get everyone to, to participate in the census, the better it is for all of us.
Councilmember Reed?
Because I'm thinking about there's a lot of people who don't have, well, they have phones, but they don't have access to home computers and things like that. And, and our elderly people too would not order from a website. They, they want to see the product that they're purchasing.
And I understand that. You know, it creates, it creates a new job. Maybe someone could go around and help them order their groceries. I still wanna touch my stuff, but-
And smell it.
You know, I don't know. Our daughter's using it and loves it. You know, she forgets to get diapers and she just goes online and they're there and so is, you know, a gallon of ice cream and a gallon of milk, whatever she needs. She doesn't have to go out, so it is nice.
But, but it comes at a fee, so the-
There is a fee.
Yeah.
There is a fee. But so is getting in your car, starting it and driving.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Depending on how far you have to drive. So it's all relative. I still don't like it, but I'm not everybody.
So I heard you say if, maybe if we could get signatures to show the need? I know I would be willing to, to go in my district and get signatures.
But it, it wasn't the need, it was the commitment to support, to entice them that it's economically sustainable, I mean-
It gets a little gray with a grocery store because a lot of people are on assistance. Not that assistance doesn't count into those sales, it definitely does. But if we're trying to attract, you know, somebody that normally looks at a more urban area and our expendable income is lower, you know, those are the things we have to try to figure out to make sure that we're putting the best case for where to entice them. So if we get, you know, 500-ish signatures that all say, I will shop here twice a month and I spend, you know, $250 every two weeks on groceries or $100 a week on groceries, then we can start to calculate what that market is. The bad part is, is that's taking it away from, you know, it's perceived that it's taking it away from your current provider. So that's why when I, you know, I said, have we started conversations with them? I think that's where you really need to start. Competition is good, competition is great, we should have a second one when it's appropriate.
I'm kind of struggling with that because I know for a fact that Walgreens was coming, Walgreens, Walmart, which one? I get it. Walmart, thank you. I knew for a fact that Walmart was coming here and failed, put a halt on that. And they were coming here with the population.
It's before me, I don't know. I find it hard to believe.
They were looking, they were looking, definitely looking and then it's-
They talked again, but they did the same thing, demographics. And they said it wasn't supported. The town wasn't big enough to support it. They're looking for a community that has more of the younger people that really use the grocery stores. And they have talked on this subject, you know, it's not possible. So, there was a room about Walmart, but when, it was before your time. So, but when they talked, when, when they talked, when they discussed it and they looked at it and they said that this town would not be a town that they would consider because it didn't have, didn't show that we supported what we had. Because we had, used to have, you said Krogers, we used to have Krogers and right over here was IGA, over here was AMP. And so Food, yeah, Foodland, we had all of those grocery stores and they ultimately moved away because there wasn't enough here to support all of them. And so, yeah.
But we were losing our hospital and we were losing, I mean, we were losing people, that's why they couldn't stay.
Well, that's the same thing. So we loo, we lost McGraw's, we lost Union Steel, we lost all of the hospital and all of those places. So people then left town to go to work elsewhere. So when, just like you say, you don't shop here because you work elsewhere and it's convenient for you and it's cheaper there. But I think one of the things that happened to us, a lot of people that can afford it, the real upper-middle-class people, they go with these order services where they bring and you get the food for, for a week, pay so much for it, it's convenient, people like it. I think the thing that happened to us was when we provided transportation. Now, Save-A-Lot was the one that failed, stopped from coming here.
Okay.
And they took away. That one, Save-A-Lot had to move because, yes, now that was the failed, one. That when Save, Save-A-Lot had to move because, yes, now that was the Fell Posh one and that's a fact. Um, if we could have maintained, because that's what people do. They leave here and go to Save-A-Lot and Marshall and shop.
Mm-hmm.
But the city has helped to provide transportation for them to be able to do that. And so, that to me was one of the things that you think about. But once they go there, they say, well, we can go with the dry cleaners. So, we lost our dry cleaner, we don't have a dry cleaners here. And you go to Marshall or to Jackson for a dry cleaners. And Kmart, all of those things, people, and those, they, I haven't used it, but they tell me they make stops at wherever and they'll pick you up later on or something. So, that makes a difference. And I, I, I think that, um, the dollar stores, and you talked about the cost. One of the things that Peggy sent and I did a long time ago was, we went to, it was Fell Posh back then. And so, not me, but other folks wanted more exclusive cups of meats and all of that. And I can't remember the name of the meat that they carry now, that's Laura or somebody or whatever. That's what they do now, they, they brought that in. So, I think maybe if we could get them to, maybe to look at that. Because the other day, I went to Fell Posh to pick up, I won't tell you what it was, but anyway. I felt, I went to the dollar store to get it because I, I thought it was expensive at the doll, it was actually cheaper at Family Fair and I couldn't believe it.
I have run into that. Some items at the dollar store are actually more expensive.
Yeah, because you have that mindset that the dollar store is cheaper, so you go there to pick it up, but honestly.
But when you break it down, the cost, you're actually paying more.
You are, you really are. And I was just, I was blown away when I saw that. Uh, and then the other thing that we have is like for, like the farmer's market. We're struggling with the farmer's market, trying to keep vendors coming because people don't use it. So, they change the dates and the times and trying to say, so when we do have the option to buy fresh.
Produce.
Produce, et cetera. If we don't, you know, that's probably lose stuff, you know, I always say, if you don't use it, you're losing.
Yeah, but I can go to Horrocks and buy the same fresh stuff that the farmer's market have and pay a different price. Because I'm a price shopper. I have, I had six kids, so I'm still stuck in that mindset.
But I understand that, but, but what we're looking for is trying to figure out a way why grocery stores won't come here. And the thing about grocery stores is that they have to have a market. So that, because they, they don't report to just the people that's managing the store. Because when you go up to this store, you'll talk to this manager about something, but he's got to talk to the corporate office to make sure that. You cover some things and some things they will do, all of them, not do all of them, but they will do some things and, and that they have, um, that they have agreed to do and have done. The other thing is that, um, I didn't realize this, is that if you can order thirty-five dollars worth of produce, like you said, everybody don't have computers and everything. But if you order thirty-five dollars worth of stuff from Walmart, they'll deliver it to you, bring it to your door.
To here?
Yeah, they'll deliver it to you. A lot of people don't know that and I think it's one of those things that we don't want to really talk about simply because we don't want more people ordering from Walmart because we will, we won't have it. But I think about the idea that when we talk about another grocery store, because I think Homer has one, Concord has one. And these other, Springboard has none, I don't think, do they? Uh-uh. So, they shop somewhere and what you were saying is maybe if we look at going, taking a wider range, maybe that would help. But will they want to locate in Albion or will they rather locate in Homer or Springboard or Concord? That would be an issue as well, so. But I, I do think that we have fought to get grocery stores here. And it's just been one of those things that, the only one I really, that really I thought we had a possibility was, was maintain, keep and save a lot here. But Fell Posh put the axe to that, that's why that didn't happen.
Councilmember Brown.
Thank you. So, when those efforts were made, um, the economic development that's going on now, I'm assuming probably wasn't happening then. So, now that things seem to be on the upswing, um, that, do you think that would make a difference or make things, um, better as far as attracting?
But you know what we have is, we don't have the major employers like you have when you had Cornings, McGraw, Union Steel, Harvard. We're talking about a great number of people then versus what we have now. And I think the, at one time Albion had twenty-eight thousand people maybe, no?
Oh, I think it was like fifteen or so.
Fifteen, I mean, about fifteen, fifteen, fourteen, I, okay. At their best, they were up there and that's when you had all of those grocery stores and then when you, the hospital, you know, Kmart closed, you had all of those. And I don't know that, I'm hoping that something like that will happen. Especially if we can maintain the restaurants that are coming in, it seemed to be coming in and they seem to be doing well. I wanted to say also that the hotel exceeded its, its expectation, you probably already know that, um, from the time that it's been here. And everybody was saying that won't last, that, you know, it's going to be another shuttered building. But they have exceeded the expectations and that their numbers are really good. The Malibu Brewery as well. So, some of the things that are coming in, we, I think, you know, like if we could get maybe a smaller thing that would incentivize us to get a grocery store, I think about dry cleaning. I hate. Like, you know, we don't have, yeah, that we don't have a dry cleaner. Because most time I forget my clothes and then you get the cash and you, you don't have them. But I think that if we can keep on, maybe other people will come back. You know, maybe they can see that Albion is moving and hopefully we'll have a better chance at getting some of those things.
I don't know if you all got to see the presentation on the branding.
I did.
What's that guy's name, Ben, Ben Muldro? He, he did a lot of, um, demographic work and, and data collection. And he's going to share that with us, but one of the things that he hasn't shared yet, and I was hoping I'd have it by tonight, is the, uh, sales leakage. So, what are people leaving Albion to buy and what percentage is that? And if, if we were to capture it, what could we bring back to the community? That will help us because I'm sure dry cleaning is going to be on that, I'm sure groceries is going to be on that, but what else? So, when we're trying to figure out who to put into downtown or who to target, um, help the strip malls target more appropriately for this community, that information will be beneficial. So, when I get it, I'll be excited to, to share that with everyone and we can, we can digest that and really look into it. But when we have that sales leakage for groceries, then we can start putting that story, because you're absolutely right. We're in the right direction. We're not there yet, that's what I said with time. It's going to take time to get there, to be say, okay, we are your perfect location. But in the meantime, there's things we could do. So, could we work with a store that's in, um, Jackson to do a satellite drop at the Albion Food Hub? Can we do our own little pilot program? Maybe, who knows? Yes, it doesn't fit everybody's need, but would it start to give the variety that we need? Would it start to give access to the, the fresh vegetables that's needed? So, what are those key things? What are the most important drivers and tackle it from that direction?
That's a great idea, really. If you could, but I, I'm still back to my dry cleaning. If, if we could just get a satellite where a person would say, you drop your clothes off, a delivery person, like you said, it could be a job for them. Deliver a person, get a van, we'll take your clothing to Jackson, Marshall, somewhere. And then, um, you know, and we'll bring it back on this day. Is that someone that could make it, you know, we'll charge you, people are going to charge you for it anyway, but it'll save you gas, it'll save you time. And, and is that something that we could think about as a, you know, creative idea to be able to have, um, to get it jump-started? Because I think we have downtown ju, jump-started, but we need to get other things like you talked about. We need, we need to give people ideas because, you know, when we all shop. For clothing, we shop for all these other things and where do we go?
Out of town.
Out of town, where, what are you going to buy here? Can't buy a pair of shoes, you can't buy.
Panty holes.
The holes, you can't buy, that's an issue, so. And, and we used to have all those stores, Sears and name all of those, we had those here in Albion. But then they went to the malls and now they're not being successful in malls. Because you know what people love to sit at home and look on their computer and go da-da-da-da-da, you know, and you order stuff. And you have the opportunity to check when it's on sale or, you know, you see something you want, you'll watch it. And, and I think that's one of the things that's really hurt us. So, what do we do to bring our community back? It's, it's sort of like, what are the ideas that people will really utilize?
Yeah.
Because I think if you get a grocery store here and it's not successful, that's going to be like doomsday, really.
Well, the last thing we want is a shuttered.
Right, right.
New store. So, but I will say with the dry cleaning, just so I can make sure that everyone's on the same page. Um, when I started here, it was, there was a pickup service at our office. Um, and it stopped about a year after I'd been here because nobody was using it.
That was me, that was only me. I used, I used Shafers, I worked there, I used Shafers, that's the dry cleaner. That was why Peggy and I used Shafers. So, Shafers would come in, they'll do that now. They'll come in and get, but they're too, what'd you say about expensive? They're too expensive, I had to go to neighborhood, neighborhood won't pick it up, so. Peggy and I used.
But would they if we did one central location? And would you advertise it?
Yeah.
So, I know this isn't on the, uh, it's not on here, but it's also an incentive thing that could, if it should happen, is the answer for the project that we're waiting to give us a yay or nay. If we get a yay on that, then that will be one of the driving forces where we'll be able to, to.
It absolutely makes that, that, um, pitch to the next business so much easier. It makes getting housing easier because you all of a sudden have all these people that need housing.
Right.
So.
And I just, you know, like, is, are there people who are willing to put in like, um, a meat market or something, a smaller version? I don't think we'll know that unless we go visit them and see. Because the meat market that was here, they left because the founders decided to retire, the owners decided to retire. Um, I think people would support it, a meat market.
A lot of people supported that meat market.
Yeah, absolutely, yes. But when, when, you know, they retired and left and, and one of them had, uh, significant illness and so, that's when that closed down. They didn't have any reason not to, I mean, you know, they weren't here because they didn't have business, they didn't have the business, they were.
Any other comments or questions, Councilmember Spicer?
Just one last comment from me. I think if we, um, we're obviously trying to move the city forward. And if we could, um, possibly consider, you know, I know you guys have a team at, um, EDC, putting a city community leadership team together so that we could, um, have meeting of the minds. Because I think we could take, um, a play from other communities playbook. You know how, um, Marshall sends things in our community to get our dry cleaning, to take our, um, residents to Marshall Productive. We could do that for smaller cities and I hope they're not watching. We can have transportation, send them into Homer or Concord or Springport because they have us just we do. So, you know, we, we can look at everybody else's property, yeah. I mean, not taking, they're helping us, they're helping us and we can help other communities in that regard, so.
Good, good.
As an option, as an option, it's worth a try.
Yep.
Yeah.
All right, my last one, thank you.
So, I just.
Thank you. Councilmember Brown.
Thank you. So, what I basically took away was that, um, the census is huge. Um, and that there have been discussions and it's, you, there's been, um, work putting to, looking into what it would take to bring another grocery store here. Um, and, and there are, there are a lot of options and I understand it's hard to capture the needs of, of everyone. Um, but there are options to fill some gaps, I get that. I guess my question now is, as a council, what are we going to do? Um, what's our next step and how do we make this goal a measurable goal for 2019? So.
That's why I was saying I was willing to go around to, um, you know, talk to people in my district to, um, one, find out if we could, we could show that we would get another grocery store here, would they support it? And why are the reasons that they aren't shopping here besides what I said? And then get some signatures and see as many as, as we can get. It's warm outside, I wouldn't mind walking around in the warm now. But I would definitely, I think that would be huge for us to do that.
Councilmember Brown.
Thanks, I agree with that. I'm wondering, I know we've, um, set up surveys for different reasons in the city. You know, we've had them available online and we've had hard copies available. And I'm wondering if that's a direction we could go as a next step to reach out to the community with the survey possibly to say, do you shop here, if, if not, why? Um, what needs do you have, would you support a store here? I'm just wondering, I don't know how, I want to say the, I know the vistas have done those surveys online and hard copy, but I just wondered if that's maybe the direction we can go to hear from the community in order to. To identify.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I, what was? Is that something that we could do, possibly create? Okay. Hey, we all come out and work extension. This is so lame, babe.
Before, they used to have at the housing development, they used to have, we were talking about people don't use computers, but they used to have those little, uh, centers there where we had computers and people would come down, teach people up. You remember that, when they used to, that would be another, I don't know if it helped the city enough.
I mean, I'm thinking like, um, library and that they would put it on the website, um, we could post it on social media. We could put hard copies in churches and stores and.
And Ann Kemp, so I think she'd be a great resource.
The Housing Commission would be a good resource as well.
So, Councilmember Clark, would you take the lead on that? Okay. Our assistant city manager will talk with the Vista Corps and get with you.
I'm willing to offer my services to support you in any way I can.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Let's talk about housing. All right. I know at the, uh, last meeting I was at the EDC, you ran down and gave the highlights on, on a variety of things with potential housing. Uh, the modular homes and a few other folks that we're looking at, if you could bring us up to speed on that.
Um, excuse me, Amy. Can I just add a comment before she starts? I just want to say that, thank you, Amy, for coming and that this talk, um, sounds much more productive and positive than any talk we've had in the past. And I just want to thank you for the work you've done and will do on this grocery store. Thank you.
It's not from lack of want, I can tell you that. If I could clone myself, there'd be a lot more happening.
Thank you.
Um, so, there's a lot going on with housing. Um, a lot of it, I can't share names, um, but there, there, it ranges from everything. Uh, there's so many prospects right now that, um, these things take time. Time is not our friend. Time is not what Mary Slater's group, she's gone, but she doesn't want to hear. You know, they want developers now, it just doesn't happen that way. But I can say, with the project that we won't talk about, with every development that happens downtown, with every good thing that happens, even the medical marijuana in Industrial Park. We set the stage for those developers to, to go from thinking about it to committing to it. So, there's things we can do, but we've looked at, uh, with the target market analysis that was done, uh, by the land bank, um, in 2015, is a good foundation. Even though it's 2015, not much has happened since then. So, it's, it's good information on what the demand is in this area. The more successes we have that support that demand, the easier it is to convince the developers to, to pull the trigger and do something. But we've talked about, um, from apartments to housing, to multi-unit, uh, leased and sale housings. Uh, so like condos and townhouses. The need is every, every single, um, category in, that you can think of. There isn't one that we don't need in this community. There has been some recent discussions on somebody that's interested in the modular housing program through MISTHA and putting on a, a, basically a mod, uh, model, modular model. So, people could actually see what they're buying. Um, those would probably range somewhere between a hundred and twenty-five and a hundred and fifty thousand. So, we call that workforce housing. It's, uh, it's, it's designed for a teacher or somebody that's more, um, middle-of-the-road income. There's been conversations on that, uh, there's been conversations on a development out at Westover, uh, for the mobile home. Um, there's been conversations on several properties with an individual that used to be a, an alum of the college and is interested in doing, uh, majority of that senior housing, so accessible housing, depending on if it's senior or maybe somebody that's, uh, handicapped. Um, all of those are current. or maybe somebody that's, uh, handicapped. Um, all of those are current, all of those are going on as we speak. Uh, there's been, since I've started, a number of discussions that get hot and then they fall off. Then maybe they'll come back. Um, so I don't, I don't rule any of them out. I keep information on them. I was able to access it, so I could put a list together that kind of represented what we've been talking about. But we'll talk about the obstacles that comes with housing. Uh, the, the most obvious right now is the lack of, of the skilled worker. Dave Deemer has, has said for his, he could put many crews to work if he could find the workers. So getting the kids to understand their options, and it's not just college, it's not just, um, military, but there's, there's so many options out there that, that are different paths. Uh, so making sure we're working in the schools to, so, so they understand that. The builders are choosing to build three hundred thousand and up houses, because that's where the demand is. There's enough demand to keep them busy, uh, so they, that's what they can shoot, they can pick and choose what they're, they're, they're building. So that's where we're seeing most of the new builds.
Here?
No, not here.
Oh, I'm about to say, where?
No, not here.
Sorry, I was, I was focused, you know, I'm thinking.
Albion, yep.
Yeah.
Nope, this is just obstacles. We can't get them to come to Albion if that's what they're building elsewhere. Demographics, we've beaten that one to death tonight. Uh, the more we get on the census and update that information, the better. Lack of comps is also an issue here, so when they're, when they're seeking funding, uh, whether it's traditional funding or incentives to help the, the development project, 'cause many of these that will happen in Albion are on contaminated sites. Not an easy development process, and there's more cost involved. So, um, when we're looking at incenting that, we have to show comparables in the area, and there isn't very many comparables that are, that are new, that are current. Um, so that's a, that's an obstacle, challenge, that we as, as economic development, as the city, will have to overcome when we're putting these packages together. There's more risk, because right now, we're on the verge of starting to come back and seeing some great momentum, but we're not there yet. Um, so the, the ones that are coming in and saying, okay, I'll put in twenty-five condos, if we can get that, there's a whole lot of risk in them doing that, except if I can give him twenty-five deposit checks. Then it's a no-brainer. But who's gonna give me a deposit check right now? And say, yep, go ahead and get a developer to build me my house. They wanna know what it looks like, they wanna know where it's gonna be. And if they wanna go to that extent, the developer's already turned away and he can go build it somewhere else, because they do have a planned development. So the more the community can put together a proposal of what we wanna see, and pitch it, and get it out there, the better.
Amy, so when you're talking to the developers, if, if you had whatever decisions you need from council, saying, this property, tell us what, what, what city-owned property, you're the land bank, or whatever we can work with, if the city would guarantee that, yes, this would be made available at next to no cost, and the city would do what they, what we need to do, uh, apply for CDBG grants or whatever, to take care of the infrastructure cost, is, would that make a big difference? If you had that in hand?
Huge difference, and you've read ahead on my page, so wait one second, and we'll get there. Um, 'cause I'll lose track. Um, one of the, the more hard ones for me to say is the consensus, consensus of the, the council. Those developers that are thinking about spending time here, esp- or spending money here, especially in a high-risk situation, are looking at council, and they're wanting to make sure, how stable is this community? The fact that we've gone through city managers, that's an obstacle. Fact that there's dis, you know, discourse on council, that's an obstacle. It's things we can overcome. And the more, like, like the mayor was just saying, the more we put out a package, and we say proactively, Albion wants you here, this is what we want, the more they'll overlook some of that other stuff, because they know, okay, they've gone through the zoning rewrite, they've done all these other things, they're, they're business-friendly, they're ready for my development. Um, and I wanna, I wanna develop there. So, keep that in mind. Lack of a full-time city manager is an absolute challenge when it comes to this. Um, it, they don't have the same trust in the community as they would if it's an experienced, full-time person that's been in that seat for a while. But we have a lot of assets, and this is where I really want you to listen, because we have a ton of sites that we could develop. We've got a lot that are brownfield or contaminated, we've got a lot of infill, thanks to the land bank and the, the demolition of blight. We've got a ton of lots that maybe aren't gonna be big developments, but we can start putting modular homes on, or we can start putting single, single-family homes or duplex on, and getting the density that way. Again, with the target market study, there's no housing category that's not needed, that's a huge bonus. So when somebody comes in and wants to build condos, we don't have to say, oh, well, we don't need condos, but we need, we need this, we need it all. And each one that comes and signs on makes it easier to attract the next one and the next one, 'cause it takes part of that risk away. The city owns.
Councilmember Reed.
Amy, how, how do you get, how do you do? Job force, uh, something about like job force-ready training for people that could do those.
The skilled trades?
Because I know the builders around here always say they don't have enough help, that, you know, they don't have enough people to, to do the work. And so, usually they're doing work, I was talking to the one who's doing the work over at Oakland, and Oak, Oakland Hospital, and, and he was saying, he went to that because he didn't have enough workers to actually do houses and things around, or jobs like they used to do. But then too, I've also ran into people who have carpentry skills. Good carpentry skills, but they don't have degrees. I mean, you know, they don't have the training that you need to actually do work that you would do for a builder, even though they can build.
And a lot of builders will train them. Will train them on, they're getting much more, you know, Michigan has always been a problem with construction, because we have winters. And when winter hits, a lot of that construction ceases, and they go down to Calif, or they go down to Florida, or warmer climates, where they can build all year, and they're like, why would I bounce back and forth? I can be more secure, and they stay. So it's always been, historically, an issue for Michigan. It's a bigger issue, because if you remember ten years ago, the only thing you heard was college, 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 college. You had to go to college. And, you know, there's so many options, but we still haven't educated everyone to those options. There's, there's, you could go and be a welder and end up with zero debt. Uh, there's enough programs out there, that because we need welders, or we need, uh, plumbers. You know, there's, there's a lot of skilled, uh, skilled worker training funds and, and resources available. I would say anyone that you know that's got some skills and has interest, send them to Michigan Works and let them match that up. Because they're, they're hungry for it. And it used to be that the, the RMTCs and the MTACs only really, uh, aided kids in high school or just out of high school, but even that's been opened up. It's now young adults. Some of them don't even require a GED. You know, there is such a demand, there are a lot of people now that say, is a GED required? If not, I'll hire without it, and maybe I'll help them achieve it. So, we just, we, we have to really work to get that message out. And I think the schools are doing a wonderful job. I just think we've spent a lot of time ingraining college, 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 and we're just not there.
I might say, one of the things a lot of people don't understand is, there is a lot of money to be made in trades. I have a nephew that does commercial down in Detroit. He's been doing it for about fifteen years, makes forty dollars a dollar. Plus four, that's, that's pretty decent.
One of the kids that just graduated, and I don't know if it was the last year or the year before, but he graduated from Marshall with, um, and did the, the next six months or whatever that's required for after graduation. But he was gra, he graduated with zero school debt, and he's got a sixty thousand dollar a year job welding. You know, again, it's knowing your options, and if, if the school will, if the Marshall Public School will help pay for that, darn, I wish I would've known the options, you know, back then. Maybe I'd be welding today instead of.
So, we talk about the obstacles, though. We don't have a school. No, we don't have a school in Albion, no.
Or Opportunity High School that does teach trades.
We don't have, um, from a beginning, we have a, a elementary school, we don't have a high school. We don't know what the dropout numbers are. And, uh, excuse me?
No, I don't know.
Yeah, dropout, we don't know what the dropout numbers are. So those are the people that we could pitch the, um, the idea of skilled trades. But we don't know where they are, we don't know how many there are. You, you can't find those numbers, and we can't find those people, because those are the people that we need to look for. 'Cause the ones that are going to college, their parents are going and want them to go to college, and that's what they're gonna do. But in looking for those people that need that skilled trades, that's usually what you look for when you find, like, people that go to work at Berman Bowl or Tenaco and some of these places, that people could use, that they could use a skilled trade. But with us now having a school in Albion, that, a high school in Albion, that could follow, we could follow these young people, we know where the dropouts are. Because we're not as family-oriented as we used to be, because, you know, we're all living different areas. That's the biggest problem, I believe, 'cause if the dropouts had an opportunity to go to school, just like he said, they don't go, they didn't go to college, they go to a trade school. We have KCC out here, uh, they, they would develop a program for you, and they probably would provide transportation for them. We need to know where those people are. Communication is a major problem, 'cause we can't find them. We don't know who drops out from Marshall High School. I don't believe we do. Do, do we know who drops out from Marshall High School? The dropouts, uh, we know what the rate is?
I don't know.
I know a lot of the kids, just, 'cause it's about my son's age, but, no, we don't know.
They just leave school. And so another thing that, one of the things that people talk about, when talking about bringing in housing, you have to have financial well-being. I live in an area right now where a gentleman lost his, his life savings, because he tried to put in housing, but it wasn't for low income, so that's not what we were talking about, but it was affairs. And, and he was banking on that the people from the college was gonna go there. They were gonna go in those, he, he started out with four very nice, um, um, condos, very nice condos. And not one person from the college purchased those condos, so they went up in a foreclosure, foreclosure sale. So those are the things that happen, and people are scared of, you know, before you talk about building something and trying to have somebody live in it. Am I gonna be able to get somebody, if I build this, am I gonna get somebody that will live in this, in this, um, um, in this building that we have? But I just think that if we could find, like you're talking about going out, if we could find those dropouts and say, here's a program, you could become a welder, you could be a plumber, or electrician, what else is it? A whole bunch of skilled trade, all of those things. And how much money, the possibilities you can make, 'cause anybody ever called a plumber lately? I did, yeah, last week. And so, you know, the price of plumbers, and the ones that are here, it's hard to get them, because there's so few of them. You know, you have to wait in line to get one. And I do think that that's a possibility, truthfully, for our city, that we could look at more so than trying to figure out, you know, like, just, just try to help these people that we have here. 'Cause I truly believe that we could have welders, and plumbers, electricians, and all of those, and those people would be able to help our city.
And if you could just remember that, when you talk about your ad hoc for workforce, that's a great initiative.
You stole my thunder.
I'm sorry.
I was about to say that.
That's a great initiative.
Wanted to thank you for that, because that's one of the things we definitely need to address and talk about in our workforce development goal, that we will be discussing on Monday.
That's a, that's a great thing.
Councilmember Clark, continue.
Yeah, so I was talking to a developer, because, um, I have a business that I run and have some connections with some people. And, um, I guess at one time, um, some people from Albion had talked with a specific person, and, um, at the time, he was, um, gave the information, and he, from his conversation, there wasn't a lot of follow-through on our part to go forward with it. This particular development is with, um, the company that does this, does both commercial, housing, uh, upscale, as well as, um, subsidized, and veterans, um, housing. Um, I don't know if you remember, no, okay. So, um, he's very much interested again.
Good.
And I will give that information to you. And, um, because some things have changed in his life, so, um, he's very much interested.
And that's what we need, 'cause all of you have touches that I don't have, or, you know, whoever's still in my shoes doesn't have. It's important that we remember them, because, you know, the time might, 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 might not be right at that time, but things change. And we'll do everything in our power to, to go after it with all guns. I can't go after every single one that comes in unless they show, they show some interest back. Or I'd waste all my time and I'd never get anything else done. So we have to be selective, but if we have interest, you've seen it with Project Tiger, the one I wasn't gonna talk about. We can, we can rally the troops and make it happen.
Right.
And remember Westover?
Yep.
Remember, we couldn't get anybody to, to buy the property. It was Westover, and they had, you know, we brought in, they brought in low-income housing, but it has to be something that people want.
And, and this gentleman is really, really much in doing both levels.
Good.
Um, because they already have that type of tier level as far as housing.
And sometimes it's easier to convince them to do one category over another to start.
Yep.
And then, once they realize how, um, accommodating the community is, and that you're not gonna sub, shove them in a planning commission meeting, you know, six months from now, but you're gonna help them, um, changes their mind. So it's, it's everybody's responsibility to make it the best experience possible. And that's why you're doing the RRC process and the zoning rewrite, and all these things that make it easy. So I can finish talking, I'm just gonna tell you the few initiatives that I came up with. You already mentioned one mayor, and that's, you know, you're, the urban, the urban renewal area is the perfect space for you to, to launch an RFP that says the city of Albion is eager for housing, this is what we want. Um, and, and this is what we're willing to give you if you do a development agreement or whatever it is. We can spell it all out. Proposals come in, and then you get a say in what fills that, that, that area. That's gonna be a big proposal, you know, that's not gonna be a onesie-twosie, that's probably gonna be, I don't know, John, thirty houses-ish. It's got some infrastructure already there, so we don't have to reach hard and high to do all of the funding for, for the infrastructure, we just have to make it work. So it's a really good, and you own it, you control it. It's an excellent option to start with. Um, but the best thing, even if nobody applies, your name is out there. When somebody does housing developments, you're gonna come up in a Google search. I've got lots of RFPs we can use as a sample, and you can look at, I'd be happy to share them.
Councilmember Brown.
Thank you. So I just, correct me if my thinking is off, please. Because I think the two biggest reasons people move into communities and look for housing, either they're retiring, or they're moving for work, right? So, we, we, I think we have a demand of retirees that would like to downsize. I think the workforce piece is, is huge with getting the housing that we need. So I guess, in trying to connect this in my mind, we need to focus on jobs and housing together, and meeting the needs of the seniors that we have, that may wanna downsize. Am I, am I off on this?
No, and I, I don't know that, well, obviously, jobs and housing are, are two different focuses, but are extremely important.
They are. Right, they, they go together.
Where workforce housing and senior housing are not exclusive, they can be one and the same. So it's defining what you want for that area, and it might be mixed income, mixed, uh, age, you know, it's, it's, uh, barrier-free housing. You know, there isn't a, a, a step off to things, but it's good for a teacher, it's good for a senior. You know, you're not limiting yourself. And maybe that's your, your, a good option to go out with, because you need so much of everything right now, today. So, there's options. But I think the RFP is one, again, if you look back at your comprehensive plan, you've talked about neighborhoods and enhancement of those, and major core, or corridor enhancements repeatedly through that. You've got some things to go off of in there that, you know, figure out what you decided in your comprehensive plan was important, and then maybe. Figure out what you decided in your comprehensive plan was important, and then maybe even figure out an initiative to, to get to that. Um.
I'm sorry, I don't think I, I, I wanna be clear, and I, I'm not, please don't think I'm being difficult, because I'm not trying.
Okay, go ahead.
Um. Did you say, there were options where like, there could be mixed housing options? What, what did you say after I made the comment I made?
It could, that could be just mixed, it could be mixed generations, it could be mixed, mixed income. It doesn't have to be a specific, um, you know, some developments are very specific. And one of the RFPs I'll share with you, they were extremely specific. They wanted, I think it was around a marina or something, so higher end, very detailed on what they wanted. You can give us a proposal that meets that and goes beyond it, but this is the minimums. Where you could be a little bit more open, you're looking for barrier-free housing that would meet a wide demand. And maybe there's different sizes in there, maybe you have three different sizes to choose from.
Okay.
Where there are, you know, there's, there's so many things you can do, but you gotta decide kinda what you want. What's most important to the community.
Really thinking outside the box, because when I think, I don't think retirees, I know my grandma wouldn't wanna live. Near my son, you know, this is that age group, but that is thinking outside the box and that's not a thought I had had, so.
Doesn't hurt when they're cleaning their snow for him, you know?
Yeah.
So, sometimes it's a good.
Just that mom without living next to him. But thank you for that, cause I.
It, it could work.
Councilmember Spicer.
Thank you. So Amy, in your mind, um, do you see the city putting out an R, RFP yesterday, tomorrow? Some point in the future? After X happens, or?
It can't be yesterday. Uh, you don't, if I were to ask each one of you right now what you want that RFP to say, you'd all have something different to say. So you gotta decide what's important, and I think you got some work to do on that. Um, because. You want it to be specific enough to get the development back that you wanna approve. But you don't wanna be restrictive, so you don't get anything back. So there's gonna be some work into this. Um, but it's not bad work, because the outcome gets your name out there, it gets the community out there. It shows that Albion is open for development and we're eager to have you come and develop. So, I would say if something went out within six months. At the absolute longest, you could put a good product out in that time. Cause you're gonna have to decide how much you're willing to sell that, that land for, how much of that land. Um, is it zoned appropriately? So all of these things have to be thought through and you have to have a good package out. Let me share the RFPs that I have. I'll write that down.
Really quickly, energy. Um, Project Rising Tide, are, isn't there a, a group, a subcommittee that is focused on housing with that?
I believe so, yeah.
Where are, like, if we got an update from them, could we get an update from them? Like, what are, what's, what, what are they doing? What is, what is, where?
Well, we have a Project Rising Tide update on Monday.
I saw that, but I don't know if it's specific to how, I think she's gonna give an update on just the overall five different categories. But could you reach out and ask her to be prepared to answer about housing, please? Thank you.
You know, I think the availability of the modular home and some of the MISHDA programs. Because you're a Project Rising Tide community, you get favoritism there. Um, you guys got a grant through, through, uh, for senior enhancement. That's a great thing. I mean, all of those things start to help. Uh, fix the issue of the senior housing, you know, they're having to leave their, their house because it's not accessible for them. Well, that grant can make it accessible for them, maybe, depends on the situation.
I agree, I just don't want things to happen in silos, like I think we all need to be a part of the solution, so.
And that's the good thing that Project Rising Tide gives you, you got task force and, and they're publicized for you to come and give your thoughts and, and share what's going on.
After that, I was gonna say anything else. So, one of the things that I think the city could do to help all of us, you know, as far as economic development is like. If you're talking about things that are happening or things that are available, why not develop a brochure that talks about, you know. Welcome to City of Albion, and you, you're talking about thinking outside of the box, I love that. But people love to have something in their hand. When they're looking at where you're gonna develop it or whatever, you know, other people run to the table and we do that, but we're not the city. So it just looks better when you talk about, cause we look at the city as, uh, you know, this is, you're, you're the primary one. And then we kind of, we fall under that. So, you, you have the expertise to put together a lovely document that talks about. Cause I have two here, one is from Albion College, and one of the things they was talking about, a stronger sense of place. And they're just talking about Albion. So they want not only the students to come to Albion, they want their parents, the retirees and all those people to come to Albion. Very nice articles in here about people who donate money and things like that. So what you could say is, we have one of the, I think you said, the lowest water bills in.
Water rates.
We're getting ready to fix that, though.
But right now, though, it's the truth right now, right? So, so, and then the other thing, we have to make sure, we gotta work on, uh, the elephant in the room, which is the streets. So we've gotta get to that. Um, and, and that's where grant writers can help you. I just read where Springport, a bunch of about fifteen cities around here. Got money to work on streets. And it was through grants. So, you could, you could hire a grant writer just for a contract or something to, to work on grants. But if you put together a document that talks about Albion, per se, and you talk about, we're coming back, or get a catchy phrase. We're coming back, don't you wanna come to Albion, don't you wanna join Albion? And I think that people would stop looking at the image that we're always looking down on ourselves. And like me always fussing about no school. You know, you could put me to rest by saying, you know, here's all the good things in Albion. I probably would never stop saying that, but, um, um, but still, you know, I'm just one person, so.
Oh, I should've leaned back here.
I gotta build off of that.
I just wanna speak on the, the chamber actually is in the process of curating something like that. They are planning to have two versions, one geared towards tourism.
Okay.
And recreational sites that we have in our city, and the other one will be geared toward the city specific, specifically. So it will have all of the, um, departments that you need to call, the numbers, like all of that information in there. For anyone moving into our city or just our current residents that they can look through and have all of that information. So that is in the works through the, the chamber.
Where I see the city being successful in that, though? Can I?
Yeah, oh, yeah.
It's okay. It's okay.
I forgive what I'm saying.
I forget. The, the city could do more of a, a developer approach.
Yes.
And, um, when you're ready to launch that RFP. We could do a splash around it, especially with the new branding. You, you put the new branding in this, so it's more of a cohesive discussion. And then we invite developers here and we pitch the project to them to open that RFP. Instead of just silently putting it up there, we, we invite them. When Cheryl was here, we talked about doing, uh, um. And it just, it comes up on my calendar next week for me to revisit, cause I've moved it out a couple different times, but. Uh, welcome to Albion, or Albion is open for development kind of idea.
And they used to take a, 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 take a drive around through town, at the places specifically where. You could do this here, or if you wanted to build a house, you could put an independent house there and, you know, you don't want it out, single out. Here's a lot, the city would probably let you have it for whatever, you know, but you know, you got, you, you, you could be one of those people that. You, you, you go in and, and, and have those, these notes where people would, once they come to town, they don't have to wait for all of that. And have someone, one of you council people, go around with them and talk to them, who know more about the city and the city working, about the waters, da-da-da, da-da-da, whatever. Don't mention the streets, but, you know, you could tell. They'll figure that out.
Some hover.
Yeah, but all the other things that Albion has, and you could say now, we, we, we have the, the. Something, you know, uh, that's, and recreation, and don't forget the parks. People love the park and the river. You got the forks and the river, all of those exciting things that you could build on. And Peabody, we, you know, you could, you could show all of those things, and that's what they do, you know, and the people, they, they, I believe that people would, yeah.
Councilmember Reed.
That's true, I just talked to a guy last week who has just moved to Albion and bought a home. And, and he was looking for Holland Park, because they wanted to have their family reunion there. And, uh, he said, I, I came here to, to visit with family, he said, and. When I rode around the town, he said, I liked it so much, I went back and told my wife, we need to move from Detroit. So they moved from Detroit here. And so, you know, we have a lot of, of positive things, uh, here in, in the city, that I really don't think we advertised.
One of the people that are in the Peabody building, they live, or they work in opposite directions, and this was just a central place that they drove through and loved. So it, it is jobs and it is, um, retirement that draws them. But you could be a bedroom community to so many people that don't want to work in the community that they live in. There's reasons for that.
Right.
You know, just the stress itself.
Right.
So, you wanna be, one of the branding strategies, and you might know it better than me, cause I only watched it and I'm old. Um, was feel at home, Albion or something like that? What a housing initiative. And if you, if you launch not only the RFP at this grand event. But you have the land bank talk about a program for infill. So somebody out there might not be able to do twenty-five or thirty houses, but they could come in and do five infill sites. One at a time, you know? Just give them options.
Yeah.
And make sure they're specific.
Mr. Tracy.
I think it'd be very beneficial for council and all the planning commission to really know what you really have out there. Just for example, if they're, where it considers the urban renewal area.
Excuse me, I'm sorry, could you speak in the, I know you probably don't want to, but I'm having a hard time here.
No problem. There's, there's a lot of property the city has that I don't, I really believe that the council and mostly of, uh, even the staff doesn't know about. Uh, the urban area, urban renewal area that people have talked about for years. And we've had a couple of developers in past years before the bottom fell out of the housing with, with the crash with, um, that. But, uh, even out in that area, there's a lot of city property between Cass Street and the river. Uh, some of that could be developed into housing, some of it would not because of floodplain. But you have a lot of property out there, you have property that has the infrastructure there in the urban renewal. You have the area that could be, uh, developed, or if you knew what you really wanted to do with it. If a developer is looking at, say for example, the urban renewal area and, uh. Maybe you have a nice stretch of property on the other side that could be developed after that. Uh, that might be more interest, of more interest too also, once things start to grow. Uh, you have property out back in, behind the hospital that probably was purchased at one time. To, I'm, I'm, and I'm just guessing at this, cause I've never gotten an answer for it, uh, from any, any previous, uh, staff. But you have several acres back in, uh, um, Kiefer Drive that the city owns, that's just sitting there. Uh, you have individual lots in different areas, so there's a lot of property out there that, uh, you know, if, if you're really wanting to see what you have. And get an idea which way you wanna go, I'd be more than happy to go ahead and get that around, but. Uh, but I need to know that you really wanna do something with it, because time is valuable.
And we need that.
So, okay, I'll hand out, um, and I don't know, are, are you. You have anything else, or?
Well, I'm hoping I'm saying.
You're hoping, okay. So while, while Amy's sitting, I'll hand out some maps with, uh, just generalized property, it's not. Some of it city-owned, some of it's not, but it gives you kind of an idea of how much residential property there is out there that's not developed. Not saying there's lots and such in between there that are not on there. But, uh, I know quite often, the question comes up, well, where can we build? Uh, so I'm gonna hand it out, and I'm also gonna hand out, uh, a little map with, uh, Maple Grove in that area up there. Uh, that has some buildable property owned by the school, too. And we also have, uh, a little over almost four, five acres in the back part of, uh, Maple Grove. I don't know if the city ever plans on doing with that, so, I'm gonna hand it out.
And I just want to mention that.
Councilmember Spicer.
Thank you. That the property, um, we had a precinct five meeting last week, um, and some of the residents were, um. Sharing ideas about the former Caldwell School, um, land, um, and, oh, we got that too? I'll, I'll be quiet.
Thanks, Joan. Councilmember Clark.
I would like to say, um, I did get the. I did take the opportunity to watch the branding, um, and. It, it energized me just by the way that he presented the city even as it is right now. Because, like, we live here, we live it. So, we didn't, you know, the way he presented it, it made me look at Albion in a whole nother different aspect. As if I was a builder or somebody potentially thinking about coming here. I could see everything he was saying happening by just doing those small little things, um, that he was presenting. So it was excellent. I thought, oh my God, I wish I had've been the other, saw the other two days, cause I saw the last day. Um, so if, if, if you other council members haven't had a, a opportunity to watch that. Um, go on, um, it was sent to us by email, and then you can watch it on YouTube and, and look at it. It's really, really nice to watch.
I just wanna echo what, um, Councilmember Clark said, I do encourage all of you to take the time to view that. Um, we will be reconvening our task force to kind of finalize that branding package and relay any, any and all feedback from the community. Um, to Mr. Muldro, so he can get us to finalize branding package. It is awesome and it's kind of mind-blowing that he was able to develop something like this. With only being in our community for three days. So I definitely do encourage everybody to view this, um, branding video and offer any feedback to myself. Um, Linda Lanu, our Project Rising Tide fellow, Amy, I know she has it on her website, has sent it out to her partners and people she's worked with. So, take the time to view it, it definitely is worthwhile. And it, and it does, it really does excite you to see that, wow, this is our community, this is where we live. And we have a lot of potential and just great things happening here.
Uh, if you want, I can run through this real quick to you, and, uh, for you. On these sheets, for example, page one, all the blue area is residential. Uh, you also have the former Mobile Home Park up there, that's in kind of a purplish, uh, color. But, this is, I didn't really mark it on something or such, this is just trying, trying to give you an idea of some of the bigger pieces. You have a lot of smaller pieces, and you have some pieces that'll be changing as time goes through. But this is all residential properties scattered around the city. As you can see around Macintosh Park, there's some chunks of property out there that's still residential and can be developed. Uh, there's even some property off of Eaton Street back then, that can be developed between Eaton, um, Eaton and, um, Hoopit Street back in there. Uh, if you look on page two. You'll see, this is, this is, uh, up in the northeast portion. Uh, there's sections of property back in there, behind the houses that had to develop. Uh, there's right-of-way street, right-of-ways that were running back up there that have never been completed. But you have property back up and through there, where you already have the infrastructure running up near that property. Uh, there is a big piece even back in there between Valhalla and East Broadbowl. And I'll, I'm gonna skip the area by the school there right now in Maple Grove. I'll come back to that on others. Page three, you look down the floors, uh, bottom of the paper. That, you'll see in there that is the urban renewal area, West Cass Street. The property to the north of Cass Street up there, and I did not outline this and I probably should've, um. City needs to decide what they wanna do with that. All that, all that area from Cass Street to the river is owned by the city. They have also property that runs up back along the river all the way to the city elements, so.
I'm sorry, John, where, you said Cass Street to?
From Cass Street, just above the urban renewal area.
Oh, yeah.
Going north up to the river.
I see it, yeah.
That's all owned by the city.
And then on the, uh, east side is North Albion, and then South Gale Street is the west boundary, that whole section.
It's all owned by the city.
There's a lot of property and, and what all there.
There's a lot of property, and, and what I'll do is, uh, I'll mark all that out, what's, what, what, you know, if it's a plug plane or not and such here, so. So there is a lot of property up around here that maybe at one time it's, they're looking at parks, maybe over, I don't know, you know, uh, those different things. There's also where Gale Manufacturing used to be up in there, so Brownfield, so.
Both of those are listed as a property for development, um, under project, not project rising tide, yes, project rising tide, house force, housing, yes, force.
Page four, uh, as you turn, that's, you're looking primarily at the south, uh, south of Erie Street. There's a lot of land out there right now that's been pretty much used for still putting crops into, but that is also residential. Uh, there's some good-sized chumps out there. And of course you have the former Doralville School site, which the city now has, and that's a kind of a story in itself, but, um, whatever, which way we go with that, hopefully we can find something beyond that. Uh, there's a chunk of property just to the east back in there.
So Doralville School wasn't given to?
It is, it is the city's.
It exists.
Doralville School property is owned by the city's property.
Why is it pink though?
Because I have it, it, or the simple fact that it does have some contamination in there, okay, and it's, it's not, we don't have, actually go with it yet, yeah, so.
No, I'm just saying, it's now ready.
Is it challenging?
It's a challenging site, yes. Uh, if you look on page five, that's just a continuation of properties back in there along the, the, um, from, from south to urban half to, um, city limits there. And runs, as it gets closer to the east, it gets closer to the, um, further river. That's all vacant property out there, some of it's used for farming, some of it's just woods, some of it's, some of it's not, that's residential. And then, kinda, from the background, page six, a lot of this in this area is owned by a college, uh, but there are areas up in here that is still privately owned property too. Now, uh, what happens now in the role of college, I, that's anybody's guess, it's a number of different things talked about, by college, or what you wanna do out there. But you can also see in here, up in the blue, where you see the pinkish stripes in it, that is floodplain, so.
What?
Floodplain.
Floodplain. And then on page seven, uh, we're getting back in around where, where everybody, you know, the dog park is the Brownfield, uh, area, and also the former Eaton Steel building, and stuff up in there, so. Uh, this just kind of gives you an idea, and there's a lot of scattered lots around here, and you have property that's not on here that, um, the land and gas and such, so. This is property out there. The other paper that I handed out here, map, give you a look here, it's just two, two pages. The bluish-colored area is Maple Grove property, ABA property. Uh, and then the yellow highlighted areas are sections of school property, uh, that has been talked about. Uh, on Watson Street there, you have the whole street that has infrastructure for water, sewage, uh, electrical, gas, uh, and you could probably, roughly right now, you know, the current zone, you could probably look at about fifteen, sixteen homes if you just want to break me out in the process. Uh, the other park out here that has a, a few different lines going to, that is where the school was born out. It's another potential area for housing, so, and which has infrastructure on both sides of it. But kinda gives you an idea, if you look at the second page down here, where Maple Grove is at, as you look to the left of the building there, it's, there's lower Ford, it's actually more of Ford, Ford is, is that real conservative, not much? Uh, it probably has been sitting there for years, it's never been developed, and that city has, so.
So you owns that whole, whole area?
The whole area.
Thanks.
Right, so, and you, if you were to do something else with it, I mean, you have, um, street right-of-way on one side, it's already been running back in there, that evidently was planned for, that being developed at one time. But just to give you an idea, that there is quite a bit out there, and it's, it's also part of the city, that's why we're seeing.
Councilmember Brown.
Thank you, so I know, um, Planning Commission's been working on the, the zone rewrite. These areas will not be affected, or could they, or?
They, right now, the ones that are in the blue
Right.
are, uh, staying
Residential.
Residential, okay.
Thank you.
The Planning Commission, tomorrow night, we have a subcommittee meeting, and, uh, the subcommittee will be, uh, trying to revamp our setbacks, because right now, the current setbacks that went into effect back in eighty-four, uh, do not work with a lot of the lots and what people wanna put in, and a number of the lots, existing lots that have homes, if something were to happen to them, would not be able to be rebuilt for that, so. That should be, we're probably gonna have a bit, two, two and a half hour discussion tomorrow night on that.
Thank you. What time is it?
That's, 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 that's seven, no, six o'clock tomorrow night.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments by council? Okay, is there a council member that would like to step up and take the lead on this housing goal?
I, in her absence, I will say, I know council member, um, Lawler has really been already kinda doing this, so I would hate to take that from her.
Sounds good. Okay. We'll move into public comments. Anyone with public comments, please step forward, stick your name and address.
Uh, Garrett Brown, ten sixteen South Superior Street. Uh, I wanna thank the council for, um, discussing, especially about the grocery store, 'cause that was an issue that was, and still is close to my heart. Um, I think one of the things I, I wanna offer the council is a word of caution, 'cause I know there's a, uh, an effort to see, you know, to have the council members, like, lead the groups, which is good, and I think it's important to rally, um, residents in the precincts, but I think it also is important to make sure that the, and then it basically, frankly, the people we pay to have full-time jobs to do these things are actually doing them, right? Uh, because, and I think one of the things that happened in the past, I know we had a, one of our goal-setting sessions, I wanna say in twenty seventeen, there was a question about, we were doing, had this question about workforce development, and the question became, well, is that something that fell on the city manager? Did that fall on the EDC director, like, who was responsible? I think that's something the council needs to hash out, because what'll happen is, I think we're all on the same page, we need to do this for the community, but then it kind of, you know, six months out, seven months out, it kind of falls by the wayside, because no one was ever tasked specifically with doing something. And I, I think one of the things that, um, having talked with Mr. Yaldo, we actually had a meeting with him, and he went to, there's a conference in, like, it's Las Vegas, they have every year, where retailers come, and, you know, he was very, um, gung-ho about the possibility of him being able to recruit a big box, and I think that even with, if, if the particular Project Tiger is successful, that increases that likelihood exponentially, but I think that there are, you know, I, I, the two things that were really encouraging to me, I think, I can't remember who said it, but, you know, I think we need to, how they say, charity begins at home, right? And I think that's the thing, we have to make sure we're taking care of residents, I think that's one of the big things of the grocery store, it does, because a lot of people go, they'll jump twenty minutes and go to Aldi and Jackson. Um, and I know, I know the, it's, it's great news here, the, the hotel's been successful, but even in that thing, there was a major push by the college, by the state to, you know, give funding, the city did some things. Um, so I think one of the things is, I would say, okay, well, Mr. Yaldo, how can we give land, build a building, and then go around and get those five hundred signatures of people who are committed to shopping? 'Cause I really think, you know, the question I would wanna know is, like, have we talked to the regional person at Aldi? Have we, I know, like, you know, Meyer has many stores, I think the Fresh Time, that came up in a conversation at EDC meeting, and even Dollar General, um, as I was sitting there reading, Dollar General has some stores in the country where they are actually offering grocery, um, options. So I don't know if that's just in particular regions, but that's something that's, that's the research that needs to be done. Um, and that's pretty much it, I think the last thing I'd run, I don't have time for that, but we need to do some market research about demographics, I think it's gonna control everything going forward in the city, as we, we're having a situation in Michigan where people are getting older, we're having a brain drain of talent out of the state, and then finally, um, you know, we're not booming like we were, so I think that, that's gonna control, and we have to kind of factor that into our planning. Thank you.
Mary Slater, five seventeen East Michigan Avenue. Um, want to let all of you know that there's been a group meeting for people interested in housing for almost two years. It's just people that gathered together because we have an interest in, a lot of us, myself, are, uh, looking to downsize, brought that up, and there is no place right now in Albion. The last new home, first new home in twenty years was built recently. So just investigating how to do this. One of the things in the market research that keeps showing that Albion doesn't have whatever, we need to expand the area that we're looking at. For example, in two thousand and six, there was a study done in cooperation with the University of Michigan and Albion College, that was all but signed on the dotted line for a senior development residence and a senior learning center, and then, of course, the housing market happened and all that fell apart. But at that time, there were over a hundred and sixty people who were willing to put down five thousand dollars with just the picture of what it might be. This study reached out to Albion alumni from Albion High School and from Albion College, and, and sent out seven thousand surveys, and they got a ten percent return. This is the kind of market we need to be looking at, not just, you know, not just the residents of Albion. I know several people who are either alum of the high school or of the college who have come back here to retire, because this is a really neat place to live. So, uh, I would like to invite your builder, our next meeting is the last Monday in August, um, and if I can get your email, Vicki, I will put you on the mailing list of, of our notes. So there are people that really want to have this get off the ground and have places to live. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any further public comments? Okay. Councilmember comments. Councilmember Brown.
Thank you, um, so I, this was a great conversation, um, I think this was probably one of the most, um, kinda laid-back informative, um, conversations we've had, especially surrounding the grocery store. Um, so I do appreciate that, I wanna say thank you for coming tonight and representing the EDC, and, um, giving us an update of what's been done, um, stuff that we didn't know, so, thank you, thank you for that, and thanks for the conversation, and council, as always, thank you.
Councilmember Clark.
One thing I wanna say is, um, I try to be an optimistic person at all times, and, um, because of my faith base, I know that, um, a lot of times, like I was saying, when I was watching that branding, you get caught in the mold, but we gotta realize, in order for something to change, we've gotta change our own mindsets and change our own words about our own place and where we stay, and what we want to become, we need to speak it and live it by our actions. And I think this was a very productive meeting, I think that, um, it probably opened all our eyes. Um, I thank you so much for showing us this information about what's available, didn't have any idea, although I see all the empty lots, it doesn't look the same when you're riding through town and seeing empty lots as this does. So I think when, you know, my thinking comes mostly at night, when I'm peaceful and quiet and nothing's moving, so I believe that we're all gonna get some witty ideas out of this, and that we're going to be able to make this community what it used to be and even better.
Councilmember Reed.
I'm going to work with these, uh, along with, uh, my friend there from the land bank, and, and we went to Lansing and, and saw some housing things there. And then another group that I was with, we went to Battle Creek and saw, uh, housing that was, uh, veteran housing plus community housing. That was very interesting, and, and, you know, I, I always said it would really look good for Albion to be able to do something like that, and I, I know there's people who I've talked with who would like to see that, so hopefully this will be the beginning of us moving forward and, and, and putting all those, our wishes into, uh, working mode. Amy, thank you, this has been very nice to.
Any other comments by council? Okay, I'd like to echo, I appreciate you taking time, um, Ms. Spicer, Mr. Brees, come in and, and, uh, give us information and have a frank conversation. Uh, I think it is very important for our city council to figure out what we specifically can do as far as policies, incentives. I love the idea of putting together a proposal, a RFP, and saying, here's, you know, we're open for business, come develop, we want housing, and, uh, and define that, so I think, uh, working on that's gonna be great. I'm gonna be honest, I don't know what policies and incentives we can offer to get a grocery store here. I'm, I'm thinking back over the things with, that were mentioned as the reasons, lower prices at Family Fair, I think you had a, a good recommendation of, well, then let's talk to Family Fair as far, as far as variety and prices. Getting a big-box store here, I, I don't think the demographics support it, and if we end up with smaller, warm-off grocery stores, they don't do the volume to keep the prices down, so I'm not sure that's gonna, you know, how well it's gonna work. Uh, I do think if we could break down certain areas like a butcher, or a produce market, or a produce co-op, or something like that, I think that might be a stepping stone, and as the downtown development continues, I mean, as far as I know, we don't have a list of businesses that have signed up and said, hey, let me know when I can move in yet. So, but as that continues and other things improve in, in Albion, hopefully the, the infrastructure as well, the streets, uh, I think then it's gonna gain more and more momentum, and it's the, you know, making smart decisions to where we get people that will bring jobs here, uh, and that wanna buy a house because they work here, or going out and trying to recruit the people that wanna move back and retire or whatever, those are, uh, to increase the tax base, and people that are gonna buy houses, uh, and spend money here in Albion. So I think this was a very, uh, productive discussion, and I thank my, uh, fellow members on council for that. Uh, if there's no other comments, if I have a motion to adjourn.
Support.
Okay, all those in favor of adjourn, say aye.
Aye.